Thank you. At this time, I would like to reconvene the broadband, Rappahannock County broadband authority meeting as well. So this is a joint meeting with the Rappahannock Broadband Authority and the Board of Supervisors.
Madam Chair, if I could, I'd like to put forward a motion that we amend the agenda to insert under, if appropriate, perhaps insert under item A, number four, public comment period. It seems there's a lot of public interest in the topic of focus this evening.
I think that makes sense to me. Do I have a second?
You have a second.
I have a motion to add the public comment period and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Could I just ask a question? I'm sorry, you moved on so quickly. Under joint meeting with Rappahannock County Broadband Authority, I mean, I see the description underneath action, discussion, and information, and I just wanted to clarify, can that discussion include also the Recycled Cares Act money and its role in this or other options?
I think funding is going to be a part of this, would be my guess.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure all the funding options were on the table.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much.
Yep. Hearing no other discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you very much. We will move into the public comment period. And I know we've got people, quite a few on Zoom as well, so we'll start in the courtroom. If you'd like to speak, let's keep it to five minutes or less, and let us know your name and your district before you start speaking. I'd appreciate that. Anyone in the courtroom?
You better speak, Leah, because we went through a lot of trouble.
All right, I'm gonna take it off. Hi, my name is Leah Childress. I live in the Harris Hollow in the Hampton District with my husband and three-year-old son. And I am here to speak, I guess, in favor of moving forward with the proposal. For three, I guess I have three main reasons why I feel like, you know, having high-speed and reliable internet is highly beneficial to everyone. One has to do with safety, one has to do with opportunity and access, and one has to do with equity. And obviously, they all kind of relate, particularly opportunity and equity. But so, just for example, we live in a place with no cell service, as many of you do, and got a landline to try to have access in case of emergency. Have learned that, you know, landline telephones are no longer a high priority, those lines are not maintained, have been in many situations where we lost internet, which was our one first source of connectivity, using Wi-Fi calling, also lost the landline phone. So living back in Hollow just feels a little bit precarious, particularly with a young one. So having access to a reliable source of connection in case of emergency feels really important. And I would also suggest that for many folks, being able to engage in telehealth or doctor's visits over video would benefit people long after this pandemic. So there are many in this county who I imagine would like to not drive 45 minutes to go to the doctor, and having that ability to connect with a doctor from your own home using video conferencing could be quite beneficial for many. So the second is opportunity. So I've been a remote employee for over six years and have witnessed the dramatic transformation in how virtual work happens these days, as many of us have experienced because of the pandemic. But even before that, I was noticing a shift towards video conferencing. Video conferencing takes a lot of bandwidth, so I have to use my landline in order to participate in Zoom calls because I'm not able to use both. So that, I guess, having the ability to just know that I'm not going to be dropped from a call, I've had to leave in the middle of meetings to drive to Sperryville to reconnect to meetings, so it's limiting and kind of somewhat demoralizing. And I can only imagine the kind of heartache and hardship of parents of young children who had to work, couldn't have all their kids online, trying to do this education remotely, having to sit in the parking lot at the library trying to work while also support their child's learning, just, yeah, really dramatic. But the other thing is having opportunity, you know, one of the other issues that's been spoken about in the county is declining school enrollment. So if we could have opportunity available for the young families, for the children of the young families to stay in the county and invest in the county and create business in the county and not have to pursue education or employment out of the county, if we have reliable and high-speed internet, people can work remotely, as we've seen through this pandemic. This is kind of the wave of the future, remote work. So if people are able to pursue that education here and stay here and be part of the community and create a vibrant and sustainable community, I think that benefits everyone. And then the third one is equity, which is, you know, no child should be at an economic or educational disadvantage because of where they're born. No one, I know no one feels like that. And it's a huge and complex problem to bring high-speed internet to a rural area, particularly with geography like this. And I'm sorry, I don't, I'm doing a terrible job of keeping track, I'm almost done. So the, I guess what I was going to say is, you know, it goes both ways. So we want to make sure all the kids are able to get the education they deserve, and we know that that means in this era of everyone relying on internet, you know, it's both education and future career opportunities. So making sure that they are part of this progress as a country towards high-speed internet and having that access, but also, you know, as we think about the fact that a tax increase could have some very severe negative impacts on many families in the community as well, exploring ways to fund this, you know, one thought, I'm not far from a tax code expert, but you know, potentially some sort of progressive tax where the lower-value properties have a lower tax rate and the higher-value properties have a higher tax rate. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Leah.
My name is Bill Fletcher. I live in Piedmont District, I believe, and I probably own land in every district in the county, which is fortunate in some ways and unfortunate in others. This really came to light when I was talking to one of the Board of Supervisors today, and this is just my off-the-cuff, I'm a dinosaur, I'm old, and I still remember the principles of Virginia when I was growing up under Harry Burr, for better or worse. And we were a pay-as-you-go state, and I was proud of that. It seems we changed. I've spent thousands of dollars of my own money to have internet on my farm, and I practiced law for a number of years in county, and I thought it was my personal responsibility to have that service for my clients, and I still continue on. I'm lucky I have DSL, which isn't the best, and I'm on Verizon, and I've almost given up on my home line, like this young lady there. But, you know, this is an expense, and I was also raised to believe that when you were dealing with governmental money, you had to be tighter with that money than you were your own money. And the real problem I have with the proposal that's before you tonight is two things. One, you don't have any facts. How many houses are there in Rappahannock County? I mean, I've heard guesstimates or approximates, but you should have that information. And this proposal would supposedly affect 2,000 homes. Well, how many of those 2,000 homes actually need it or want it? I'm sure this young lady in Harris Hollow has tried a lot of different things, Freedom broadband, satellites, different things. Also, I'm fortunate enough to know John Cap, who has, he's a beta tester for Starlink, and I've been reading articles and some I've shared with you all. And it's the soonest this thing could be completed in Rappahannock and be serviceable to the community is probably two years. The Starlink, they've got two problems right now. One, they can't get the computer chips, and two, they can't get enough liquid oxygen to put it up. But there are problems with everything in those regards now. I really believe that the county is being premature, and I also want to say, I saw the letter that Chuck Okry, or Aker, which he certainly is now, has offered to the county $3.4 million. Chuck's a great guy, he's a straight shooter, I admire him and like him, but I may disagree with him on this issue. And I may disagree with you all. If I, when I grew up, if you wanted electricity at a house, and most of our houses didn't have electricity, the electricity came into the farm about 1938, shortly before I was born, but if we wanted, there was a big rush to get it, and Potomac Edison went around, who owned it, or Page Power at the time, excuse me, and then Potomac Edison, then Allegheny, and now Rappahannock Electric, in my lifetime. We paid to get the electricity on our farm. I personally don't know, or I don't know how the community as a whole would feel this is a $6 million project, however, it's funded. Yeah, you get grant money, but we've got more important issues, I think, this county is facing right now than broadband. I mean, I've heard estimates on the courthouse from $10 to $20 million. Well, if we spent $2 million and got this in, and the judges are going to stop having meetings in the courtroom, I understand, or allow you all to meet here, well, you'd move over to the high school, which you've done numerous times. 60% of our budget is for that, so I think it could be a collaboration with the schools. I think you need to know how many people actually want this service, because it's $3,000 per household estimate, as I understand it, for this. Well, let's say 500 people want to have the $3,000 spent. Well, if it's only 500 want it, and you got a $6 million project, then it's like, Ms. Curry, you're better at math, we've proven that. I don't want to take up my time to look at it, but it's probably $18,000 per household. Is that a governmental function? I mean, the off-site learning has not been effective. Every kid that's done off-site, I mean, the education rates have gone far down. I mean, the passing on the standardized test, it doesn't work. You could have community centers or locations where the kids had to go, and they'd be monitored by a school teacher or somebody in the staff, which would be a benefit. It would be lower cost if you're looking for the education or telehealth. I go to the library at times. You're talking about building a new library. You know, you've got the Jamison Room that could be used, there are alternatives. But before you get into a $6 million project, one, you should know what you're doing, you should know the number of houses, two, you should know how many people want the service, and three, you shouldn't rush into it. I mean, this thing has gone on as quick a legislation coming forth as I've seen, and I guarantee, the thing went up on board docs earlier this week, the latest proposal. I mean, people need time to think about it, and the issues that'd be presented tonight before you rush into something. If you rush into something, you're going to make mistakes. I mean, you've got a special counsel for this broadband because it's, I don't understand it. I mean, I'm a Luddite, I admit it. But, you know, you need to have somebody call and find out whether Starlink will work. But you all can't, you don't know any answers, and yet you're moving on a project that's 25% of the annual budget of this county, about. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Steph Ritter, and I'm from the Wakefield District, and I fully support the All Points Contract option number one. I think if you go with other counties, you have a much better chance of getting the money. Now, as to, in response somewhat to my friend, Mr. Fletcher, survey after survey of this county has shown that broadband is one of the things that people are most concerned about. You know, to say that there don't exist people who would like to have internet services to their houses is just plainly absurd. People, including my husband, cannot conduct their businesses from their houses with the current internet. You know, it's, in order for him to do any kind of business meeting, he's going to go somewhere else. And our internet is a combination of extremely expensive and inefficient. This one has got to be better. It can't be, I mean, for the last few weeks, we've barely had any kind of internet because of the storms. Okay, the next point I'd like to make is that the county is responsible for providing education to all the children here. You cannot provide adequate education in the 21st century unless you provide adequate internet to the homes of those children. I think we're denying them not only equal access to adequate education, but equal access to any kind of job opportunity, to any kind of scholarship opportunity. For them not, you know, for the kids to have to drive to the library to get on the internet is really, in this county, which is wealthy, it's close to Washington, D.C., and has the means to provide, and as the attorney from, you had as a consultant said, we are late to the dance. This is our only dance partner, and we need this service. Okay, you know, the one thing that the Board is really responsible for is providing for the health and the welfare of the citizenry. You can do neither if you don't provide adequate internet to every citizen who can have it, who wants it, and I'm guessing most citizens here do want it, because you can't even conduct an interview with a doctor without having some kind of access to the internet. So I've been pondering, why is it that people are opposed on this board to these contracts, to having a contract with All-Star? And it occurred to me that maybe they don't have the kind of internet that 90% of the people in this county have. You probably have Comcast, you probably have Xfinity, so you don't really know what the problems are. But I'm telling you, having, you know, having like satellite internet in this county is not sufficient for carrying on adequate education or adequate businesses. You know, this is a moment where there's tons of federal money coming down the pike, and there's tons of, you know, state money. If we don't grab it now, we're going to miss that opportunity. In some ways, you know, the whole thing about, you have this, it reminds me of that Marriott Connect, okay? People are asking for bread, and you guys are saying, let them eat cake if you don't provide them with adequate internet. And they can't afford the cake.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Hey, Bill, my name is Patrick Peterson, Wakefield District. So we're new to the area, you know, I've been here as long as everybody else, moved here from Alexandria, kids go to Wakefield, love the area instantly, you know, it's very community, everybody's buying in, everybody's helping with their kids, everybody's extremely friendly, what you'd want in your hometown. The things, you know, that everybody's brought up, you know, that I heard, are, I don't think we need to necessarily take the dance partner that's at the dance because they're the last ones there. I think that the solution that's at the hand is, you know, 15- and 20-year-old technology. I lived in Prince Linn County and Alexandria my whole life. They sold this broadband, and houses were going to get wire everywhere, there's still houses without wire. It's not any easier out here in the mountains. There's a million other solutions. I mean, we should be looking into 5G. You have power poles, you already have Rappahannock involved in this. You'd be going off the power poles. Now we're bettering not just the Wi-Fi, but the, not just the Wi-Fi, but the cellphone signal. I mean, at the end of the day, if you look up and you run the accidents that happen in Virginia, per capita, we have more accidents in our school buses and our kids going to school than any other county in Virginia. On those roads, they have zero cellphone reception. If we're going to fix one problem, why wouldn't we fix both with the same funds? And that being said, there's all this government grant money you're going after for one specific thing. We're in a day and age where COVID is pushing people to do education at home. I'm not a big fan of that, but at the end of the day, there's people that are not going to be educated if we don't give them the signal for them to continue on. Why would you spend a dollar over here if that dollar couldn't do two things for you? It's kind of pointless to go down a road that you're only getting one thing, you're getting technology from 15, 20 years ago. It's the same as putting up a bunch of cellphone towers where half of us are going to get it, half of us aren't. You're going to be moving the tower this way and that way. That's crazy. I think there's 1,800 poles in this county. We should be looking at every eighth pole putting up a 5G antenna. At that point, if somebody doesn't have service, we're then bringing in a surveyor to figure out where's that next antenna on, those seven poles need to go, so this man can get internet, or so that this lady can get cellphone service in her business. If you look at the statistics, this is what, 17.3, I think it was, entrepreneurship in this county. So now we're pigeonholing those people that have a higher entrepreneurship in this county than any other county in Virginia with the worst internet and cellphone service in all of Virginia. Again, I'm new to the state, I'm new, or new to this little county. I think that it's amazing, we're growing, you know, raising our kids here, we're not looking to move anywhere, we're going to buy more land. At the end of the day, though, if these two things were fixed, you already have a thriving county. I mean, think of all the farms here. You're buying $800,000 pieces of equipment that John Deere doesn't not try to have technology that could work off a satellite, but those guys are buying equipment and using 80% of the tech, it doesn't really make any sense. At that point, you're not getting what you're paying for. So I appreciate everybody's time, that would be my opinion.
Thank you.
My name is John Capielli from the Hampton District. I agree with a lot of things people said, and they took my powder before I even got here, especially this young lady. However, the one thing that nobody has been able to say is about Starlink. I am fortunate enough to want the people to have the Starlink. We ordered it in January, we got it in, I think, the end of February. I grew up right outside of New York City, and we had a private T1 fiber optic line, which is like a fire hose compared to a garden hose for data, and we use a lot of it. We do AutoCAD drawings and things like that. One of my daughters has a degree in graphic arts, and when she comes down to visit for her job that she probably works from, the Starlink's the only thing that was able to handle it. We've had HughesNet, we've had Piedmont, we've had, I think it was another satellite company at C, and they were terrible. It just, it was overly expensive. The Starlink is, for us, the answer. As far as Bill had mentioned about them having problems servicing the county, the government gave Starlink, I believe it was $3 million or maybe a little bit less, I'm sure Mr. Curry knows the correct number because he knows all of that stuff. Thank you. Specifically to help rural areas get internet service. What they're doing is they're ramping up to not only, they already actually have 1,700 satellites up now currently, which are enough to handle the entire planet. Where they're behind is manufacturing the units that are delivered to your home. They're not having chip problems because they're making their own chips. Liquid oxygen is more for delivery in rockets. They've actually set their own plant to make their own. We are looking to spend an enormous amount of money, but as Bill said, there are certain people that believe that this is overly expensive to be run to people's homes. Those people that don't want it tend to actually say no. This went on here, Bill said, in 1934, I've only been here seven years, with electricity. There was a lot of people arguing against electricity. There's a lot of people arguing against cell phones. Everybody in this room has a cellphone. Everybody in this room has electricity. We're all enjoying the benefits of it. But when electricity came out, there was a fight between Nikola Tesla and Edison over AC power or DC power. One of them took elephants and electrocuted them in the middle of New York City in order to say, this is the one that we want. We're back to the same kind of thing. This is the beginning of electricity in this county by having fiber optic lines. I'm in the excavation business. I know what it takes to put these lines in. I've done 40 years of this. It can be done. It needs to be done. And I have every confidence in Mr. Curry negotiating the best deal and setting the budget as he has done for the last four years without having any big increases. He's done it in Gloucestershire County where he came from before. I think he's going to do it again. Thank you.
Thank you.
You either reach by me, I don't vote out here, so I'm sorry I don't know my district, but I live up Old Hollow. I've been here about 25 years with my little cabin, been coming out here since I was about 12. I didn't intend to speak, so my apologies, I'll keep it as short as possible. I think I got four sentences. I got two new best friends in here with a lot of the arguments that were made. Could not agree more that we really have an opportunity before us that we need to embrace. I've been waffling a little bit, as I've shared in public commentary, and certainly, I think I'm fairly well known on social media, I'm sorry. Yeah, this is not perfect. I really have some troubles with All Points from what I've seen them do and the rest of the state and from my experience within Loudon County. But this is a pretty darn good solution that's right here before us. It's certainly not perfect, but we will watch them, all of us will watch them, and we'll make sure this gets done and gets done right. Some metrics I heard earlier, number of citizens is just about 8,000, number of residences is about 4,000, you have a little bit over 2 people per residence, and the number being proposed to be spent per residence is about right. You know, can we do that efficiently? I hope so. It's going to take some time, as we all know in the technology industries, we have a shortage of supply. Fiber's hard to come by right now. So there are going to be delays, and there's going to be some issues, and we've all joked about construction issues out here. Certainly, we're going to have some issues, they're going to slow down, and not everything's going to happen exactly as planned, but it's going to happen. There is no problem that we are faced with here that somebody else has not experienced someplace else. We can get this done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry. My name is Carolyn Butler. I live right in the middle of Sperryville. Everybody that I know in Sperryville, my brother in Washington, everybody has Comcast. I don't know anybody that has any problems, but I don't know people that live back in the hollows, because the town people used to not mix with the people in the hollows. So I don't happen to know them. But I can tell you one thing, I am not going to pay $1,000 tax for this. There's no way you're going to make me. My mother was threatened when they put the sewer in, they were told her, because she was a widow, if she didn't do it, she'd have to go to jail. Well, don't try that on me. I'm not paying it, I don't want it, I don't need it. When I retired, I threw my computer in the trash, my cellphone in the trash, I was glad to get rid of it. And Dr. Grimsley just said, 300 kids, that's all. And Dr. Grimsley just said 300 kids, that's all, that do not have the internet. We pay over 18,000 per student to go to school here. That's a lot. That's more than most counties pay. To me, it's a school issue. The school has enough money in their budget. They could do without some of the fancy vehicles and figure it out for those 300 students. The other people in the hollows, they can wait until something else comes along. But don't send me a bill because I'm not paying it.
Thank you.
Hi. I've got a torn hamstring, sort of, and I apologize for being so slow. Mr. Whitson is my supervisor and I know several of the people on this board. And I want to commend you for having this public hearing of an issue which is of vital importance to the future of Rappahannock County. I was glad to hear Mr. Fletcher. His family was one of the founders of this county hundreds of years ago, along with the Massies and the Andersons and so many people who had the vision that this would be a unique, safe, beautiful place for centuries. But now, but now, the county may be dying. Young people are leaving. Children can't get the education that is needed. And part of that is because there's no broadband. Like Mr. Fletcher, I'm a lawyer and I have the resources to have fairly decent, not great, internet and cellphone and Wi-Fi here. But I'm right off 211, I'm right on 211, really, and that makes it easier. But for those who need to work, for those in this county which is aging, who may be sick, for people who may go into a ditch in a bad snowstorm, in a hollow, or even in a back road, not in a hollow, it's very hard to get help. And we know that. And many of us think, "This is our home. We love it here, but how long can we stay?" Yes, the lady who spoke about the school cost is right. It's expensive per student. Why is that? Because young people with children are leaving the county. They can't abide the lack of internet, the lack of jobs, the lack of opportunity. So, this is a great chance for us to save the county with the kind of vision that decades and centuries ago, the Fletchers and others had. This is a chance to maintain the beauty of this county and the youth of this county. I'm 80 years old and I'm one of the younger people who lives in Rappahannock County. That's not right. That's not good. But my grandson is 12 and his future, I hope, is here, but not without broadband. So, I thank you for the opportunity of addressing you, for the chance that you gave all of us to air our opinions. And I hope you look to the future and make sure that there is a Rappahannock County that we can all live in and stay in and get medical service in and educate our children and grandchildren to the best standard of the 21st century. So, thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll just, that's Judy Hope from the Hampton District.
Paige Cloney from Jackson District. First, I'd like to say I'm a strong supporter of the broadband, but it's not the what that we're after. Almost everyone agrees that we need better internet service. My issues are in the how, all right? The first how was the money, but it looks like Mr. Akery has put a big dent in that problem, and thank you very much. But you still have some ways to go, all right? The second big issue is I can't understand the Piedmont, the, no Piedmont, the All Points Broadband Business Plan. When they offered to us that for the first 12 months, regardless of the length of your driveway, you can get the connection for $199, I went from having to pay $36,000 to get to my half-mile house versus the 199. If they're going to eat all that cost, I don't see how it works. It just doesn't financially make sense. Now, maybe I'm missing something. Our previous Citibank executive can probably tell me what I missed in my analysis of their revenue. But if you look at the Clark County proposal, they didn't offer that. It's 199 and you're not only paying the difference, you're paying a premium on top of that. So, there's a problem with that. And if the company can't make money in the first five years, 10 years, is it viable? And are we partnering with someone that can get the job done? Will they be here, all right? To that regard, what are the consumer protections? Mr. Whitson, you're trying to deal with this landline issue all the time. And you're dealing with regulated companies and you have the SEC, when all else fails, to hammer them over the head. We'll have no hammer like that with All Points Broadband. Now, maybe your legal counsel can write a performance bond where the future customers are party to that bond, but is All Points Broadband going to accept that? Those are some of the issues that don't have to be resolved today. I realize you're going to go forward with where you are, but that is, those and many other issues have to be resolved prior to January and making the final decision and the commitment. Please, I'm sure there will be more, but thank you for listening.
Thank you. Anyone else in the courtroom?
Sheila, resident of Hampton District, I think, yeah. I, I, sorry.
Don't leave.
I wasn't going to say anything, but then I thought I would. There was an anniversary, I think it was 25 years, that if you build it, they will come. Very famous thing. And then I have another saying, "Flock of geese going over," beautiful ad that Wall Street Journal had like years ago that I posted on my office door. "The race doesn't belong merely to the swift, but to the far-seeing, those who anticipate change." And you know, we've been talking about how we're going to plan for the future of our county. And we've been working for years now on broadband, little bitty broadband committee, and then it grew into a big-time broadband authority. And so now, I think we are reaching a point where this is something that is going to be possible. We just have to figure out how to get it done. And I think we have enough smart people who are going to be able to take this and figure out how to get it done. It's very important. I think the lady over there said something about when, we want the future here. So, we want people coming here. And one of the things people are going to be able to come here if they do have the ability to work from their home. So, they might be able to buy a little old piece of property that really is sort of run down, but they're going to be able to improve it if they can find broadband as well. And then they're going to improve the property values. So, we're going to be able to grow as a county with our revenue as well. And so, I think it might be a win-win situation. It's very important for the children. And there was a thing about, oh, we'll just buy Starlink for each one of them. Unfortunately, every school year has a different family coming in. We need to, a rising boat, a rising tide fixes all boats, okay? I get mixed up. Anyway, so that's something as well, that we need to get it for everybody as much as possible, like the electricity. It's something that we need. And then everyone who's going to be able to come who wants it can then benefit from it. There will be people who don't want it. That's fine. But let the ones who need it, like the little children who need to be able to learn and grow and go to school. Telehealth is very important. There are a lot of people now who, we have an organization called Rapid Home working to be able to provide services and fun times for people who want to be able to stay at their, in their home and everything and live and stay here in Rappahannock County. I think Henry Gorfin made a good point that he wanted to be able to stay here. And it was finally, he was able to find something in the town of Little Washington so he could stay and live out the rest of his days here. So, it's very important and I know y'all can get it done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else or I'll go to Zoom? Seeing no hands in the courtroom. Anyone on Zoom, there's a way to raise your Zoom hand and we'll take you one at a time.
Yep, there, I'm muted.
Beach Family.
Beach Tree Farm.
Beach Tree Farm, sorry.
This is Anita Ramos. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, very well.
Hey, Anita Ramos, Hampton District. I look on this, this whole situation with a great deal of trepidation. But unfortunately, I guess we're going to have to go pick the screening into the 21st century. I ask you all on the board to speak clearly into your mics because the last meeting, some of you kind of faded at various times. So, please, speak clearly. Don't all speak at once because I can't tell which, you know, I don't see any of your faces, so I can't tell who's talking some of the time when two or three of you are talking at once. So, that's about all I have to say right now.
Thank you. Anyone else on Zoom?
Matthew Black.
Matthew Black. Mr. Black, can you hear us?
Yeah, I can, I can hear you. Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Yes, I wanted to add my voice to those who are supportive of moving ahead with All Points and bringing broadband to all of Rappahannock. I think this is a very strategic investment, about as strategic as we get. And I think it's a great role for our county government to take on this kind of investment to upgrade our technical infrastructure. We've been saying for years that we want to attract and retain more families, attract and retain more businesses. We want to help our students and so on. And the fact of life now is the connectivity is, is of paramount importance. It's crucial. It's a utility. And with broadband, it's, it's another way of dealing with, with our isolation out here, both in terms of transportation as well as living alone. The internet allows us to connect and, on the other hand, it might be an antidote to some of our isolation problems. I think it's, what I discovered too, by the way, I haven't heard others say this. I don't have any cell coverage of where we live, but I have decent broadband right now and I'm able to make cell calls through my Wi-Fi. So, one of the added advantages of having broadband more widely available to homes throughout the county is people would be able to use their cellphones when needed. Anywhere from a 911 call to calling up their mom and dad. This is a very expensive undertaking, no question. And I can appreciate why the decision gives all of you on the board some pause. But I, I urge you to take a deep breath and move forward because any of these big multi-year investments are a big jump. And at the same time, we are really at an incredible moment where we have a huge amount of funding available. I've, it's been a long time since I've, I've been aware of so much state funding available for a certain kind of investment undertaking. And that's not going to last for long. And so, I think we need to strike while the iron is hot. I understand too that you're trying to, that you're considering two different options with All Points, the, the regional plan and the county plan. And that they seem to be very similar in all respects, except for the amount of essentially subsidy that, that we're asking for from the state, which has a unfortunate negative effect on our probability of winning. And that's a hard one. I did hear the presenter from All Points say that, that 50% threshold has seemed to have been their, like kind of the rule of thumb, their, the threshold that separated winners and losers in, in prior competitions. And if that's the case, a question to you is, would it be better to come in at 49% as opposed to 51? That would be my temptation. A second question I have is, the amount of funding I heard went from 70 million to 700 million. Do we have any sense of how much demand there is for these new state funds? Is there enough to accommodate all of the requests? Does, do the people from All Points have some insight into this? Because that could affect what we seek in terms of our subsidy from the state or what percent we're looking for. Anyway, that's, that's it for me, other than to say, I think this is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. And I hope we, we strike and I hope, as somebody said earlier, I think it's an important opportunity to address equity, that, that we don't want to suffer from this digital divide and it's only going to become worse over time. So, good luck in your decision-making.
Thank you. Anyone else on Zoom? No hands? Not seeing any hands on the.
There's one.
Mr. Ryan. Just in.
There we go. I think I'm unmuted, okay?
Yes, sir.
I just want to support one and thank everyone on the administration and from Gary, Curry, and our administrator on down for the board for the initiative of heading down this road, which I think that we've heard from many, many folks and all demographics is much needed for Rappahannock to remain Rappahannock, but also to become an even better and more welcoming place for Rappahannock. So, I just want to support the many people that have voiced support for this, this initiative. I think the one thing that is needed is a better communication. We will, even if it's by AOL or even an old-fashioned web. We have now heard some disinformation, information that may not be shared with everyone. So, I would say that there's, go back to the matter somewhat of trust. I mean, I trust the board and all members of the board to make the best decisions for Rappahannock. And who do we trust as we're heading down this ever widening path of the internet and broadband to get the information that we all? broadband to get the information that we all make the best decisions? So I would want to encourage us to go forward, but also with maybe tapping someone or three people who have a lot of interest in the future, in the future of Rappahannock, but to provide us with the needed information and information with a capital I, not disinformation. And there will be certainly points, personal points of view. That information is the lifeline of our democracy and for our county. And broadband has to be part of that in the future.
Thank you. Any other hands in Zoom world? Tommy, I think I see--
Yeah, I have a Tommy. You should be unmuted. Nope, you've remuted yourself.
Sorry about that.
That's okay.
My name is Tommy Bruce and I'm calling from Washington, Virginia. I'm in the Hampton District. And I would, wanted to add the voice, first of all, wanted to echo everything I've heard tonight. I think this is a very good initiative on your part. I hope you can see through all the money issues as to me, the concerns that some of the folks have expressed. But I think this is absolutely necessary. And I want to just put the voice of somebody who cannot put her own voice at the moment, that's my granddaughter. She's two years old. She just moved with her brother and her father to Rappahannock to make a life here. And the idea that you all today leaning in on this issue to make sure she has the resources when times comes, to be able to be in the world while enjoying and living in Rappahannock, I applaud you for that. And I hope you will endorse this move and support it.
Thank you. Dr. Grimsley.
Uh-oh.
Uh-oh.
Hold on.
Please hold.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Awesome. Thank you, Maggie Herman. I just wanted to add a few comments here. I've been hearing a lot lately about this being a major school issue, which of course we've really exacerbated the digital divide since the pandemic hit. But this is really a community conversation, a county conversation, that the schools have just been participating in and have lent our support should the county decide this is what they want as the future of the infrastructure moving forward. In that sense, we do have funding to put toward our 300 households that need internet not children, 300 households. If you multiply that by the average number of children, 2.5, then it's almost three quarters of our student body that needs reliable internet. So that was based on a survey that we sent out. So the families definitely do want it. 97% on our survey about S3 money said that that would be a great use of some of those funds to help support this initiative for those families. So I think that's a really important point that we supported for our families. But ultimately, this is a county decision. Lots of big questions. I think Mr. Glenny summed up exactly some of the things I've been thinking about too as a resident too. As long as we're asking those important questions, making sure it makes sense, and this isn't just about what we want for our community right now. Because that's, makes it, you know, it's more skeptical that way. But where do we want to be? And what does our comprehensive plan say? Are we supporting that? Does the infrastructure go that way? At first, I was a big proponent of Plan Two until I saw that letter with a huge gift from the county residents. So that puts us pretty close to where you need to be to do Plan One, I would say. We're here to help in any way we can and of course, support this for our families. And we don't have any, I've heard someone say something about fancy vehicles in our parking lot. We don't have any fancy vehicles. I'd take a ride in some, like to see them. But those are for students, for exports, which we're obligated to do for students with special needs that need to travel pretty long distances. So maybe if we had better internet connection, we wouldn't have to travel so much. It might actually save us quite a bit of money with transports. So just one other point. Thank you.
Thank you. Last call on Zoom. Seeing no hands, I will close the public comment period and open the discussion at the board. Do we still have Mr. Inez?
Yes.
Okay, so we have Mr. Inez from All Points is still on the call. I think he's--
Possibly five minutes.
Five minutes, okay. And we have Lonnie Hamilton from DHCD also joined us.
Chair, you did receive a question earlier about CARES Act cash position. I did calculate a couple of those numbers earlier today, thinking that the board may want to know where you stood on those. If you recall, public safety payroll was used to recognize $348,402 of CARES Act dollars. And then recently, the board allocated $103,000 of that to the sheriff for mobile data terminals. So that leaves you with $245,402. Then think back to the very end of FY '20, when we were working with the schools on some of the expenses that they had in their budget and that needed to get done, but were eligible for CARES Act. And so that was $150,000 plus $88,483. That totals $238,483. So if you look at the FY '20 school funding and then what's left from the public safety payroll, you have $483,885.49 that is cash that was freed up by recognizing eligible CARES expenses that were already in your budget in a manner that was in keeping with the CARES Act requirements.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. Do I understand Mr. Inez is only with us for five minutes? Is that what you all just said?
He's got a short time, yes.
I think that, I'd like to ask him a couple of questions if he has limited availability.
Go for it.
Mr. Inez, it's Christine Smith from the Piedmont District. And in our meeting last week, Mr. Carr talked a little bit about the compatibility or the conflict that would arise between the VATI application at the state level that you all are proposing and the ARDOF that has been won by Chantel to supply service to 800 homes in Stonewall Hawthorne, which is Mr. Parish's, and Piedmont District, the district that I represent. And I was just hoping you could elaborate a little bit more on that challenge process and what that might mean for Rappahannock County and our relationship with Chantel and that federal ARDOF money that they're obligated already to spend in Rappahannock.
Sure. Super pleasure, Mr. Inez, thank you for the question.
Thank you.
And I think after I responded, maybe hopefully for, I think Lonnie Hamilton from DHCD maybe a little more. So the way that the ARDOF area challenge would work, if there were a challenge, would be that there is approximately 800 locations would be pulled out of the VATI application if the ARDOF recipient and the county and the state all agreed to accelerate the ARDOF deployment from six years to three years. The provisional win in that area is for, I believe it's for fixed wireless technology to deliver 50 down by a service.
Correct.
And if there is no challenge being credible by the DHCD, then those locations would continue to be served in the project area that they carry and that all points of the platform. And if I misspoke, Mr. Hamilton, I think we'd be able to allow them to implement challenge process.
Do you want my time to get Mr. Hamilton?
Yes. Mr. Hamilton, you're going to be unmuted.
Yes, he covered it pretty well, actually. If All Points were to include, you know, the other, the ARDOF recipients award in the, in the project, you know, that recipient can challenge. And if they do, then they're required to enter into an immunity of the county to serve it three years instead of the mandated six ARDOF program.
And that challenge period would be in the January to March timeframe, assuming things go according to schedule?
The challenge would, they would have to challenge it during the VATI application challenge process.
When, when would we expect that to happen?
That would be, so that'll happen after we get the application. So I think that'll be October--
Okay.
--and pull up the exact--
So that's pre, pre-award in December?
Pre-award, yes. Challenges are due October 21st. And the challenge determination process ends on December 3rd. And so it would be after that that we would announce awards.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I got a question.
Yes, sir.
So I was wondering about these, I'm Chris Parish, Stonewall Hawthorne District. I'm wondering about the, the long driveways that they're going to put in. I realize that most of it will come over the REC line, so it wouldn't be that expensive. But the ones that are, where you all would end up taking a big loss, does that come out of your pocket or is there another, is there another pocket of grant money from the state of Virginia that would take care, is there a special pocket for, to take care of like rural people that you all will be dipping into?
I believe this is the pocket to take care of the currently unserved locations. The state is developing a program called the line extension program, which Mr. Hamilton may be able to elaborate on, but they, they won't have a plan for that until at least October or November. And right now, that's approximately $8 million bucket that is intended to bank for low and moderate income households across the state and not necessarily for VATI award recipients. But there's not another bucket, so to speak, that I'm aware of in the state that would pay for these long drop costs, other than the currently, or upon report.
Is it reasonable to characterize your design as following to the greatest extent possible the existing REC infrastructure, pole infrastructure, and not necessarily the right-of-ways of the state roads and therefore needing to follow long private drives?
That, correct. We would try to follow the existing electric infrastructure as much as possible to reduce cost and thus while partnering with REC to drive those costs down and to make the resiliency of the network even higher.
And we know of our various utilities out there, some of them clear their right-of-ways and some of them do not.
So I've got one more question. Where is the definition for unserved households? And specifically, there are households that live on a road that has Comcast, but they are so far back--
Right.
--it's too expensive for Comcast, for them to hire Comcast to put it in. Comcast doesn't want to put it in in some cases. So, so I understand if they are deemed unserved, then you all will go in there, assuming we come to an agreement, you all will go in there and serve them. So where, what is that definition or where is that definition of what constitutes an unserved household?
So the state defines unserved as not having access to 253, that's 25 megabits per second download, 3 megabits per second upload without a special construction cost. And for the American Rescue Plan dollars, that service needs to be provided by a wire. So if there, if there is a road that the current wireline provider has infrastructure on, but they charge a, let's say $56,000 install fee, that would be considered a special construction cost and that location would be unserved.
And so you all would go in there for $199 and take care of them?
Yes. The way that we capture that data is that we would, you know, feed the resident at the location to say--
Right.
For example, while Comcast may have my driveway, my internet installation cost was $56,000. And in the state sphere, I believe that would be unserved. So we could include that location in our project. And then for the first 12 months, that long drop portion of the install fee would be waived. I don't know if Lonnie Hamilton has any other insight on how they determine whether it's served or unserved, but that's how we would propose to determine served or unserved.
And Comcast may not be approaching that structure the same direction--
Right.
--in route as electric.
Right.
So if they're following electric, they may be closer or further.
Right, from the, from the other side.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I know it approaches my house for both directions.
Right, got you, right. Okay. Now, one final question, and this is maybe not a question, but is there any reason that I should understand what the middle mile is? Because I kind of don't.
So I would think of the middle mile as a kind of a four-lane highway. And then the last mile would be your kind of local collective roads.
Right.
And we, we would build middle mile and most of the last mile with enough capacity to serve all of the residents and all of the locations with 10,000 megabits per second up and down. And so that middle mile portion needs to be built with, you know, the next 10 or 20 years in mind. So those, the fiber and the infrastructure may look very similar from same, you know, ground level, but they have a whole lot more of the glass fibers inside of them than what you would have connecting to your house. So you don't, you don't really need to understand--
Yeah, for as long as I don't need to understand it, then don't worry.
But that was a good explanation.
It was.
Mr. Whitson?
Yeah, Mr., this is Kier Whitson, representing the Hampton Voting District. And my colleague, Mr. Parish, actually beat me to the punch and almost resolved the question I had. And I know you have to go, so I'll be quick. On Tiger Valley Road, which is in my voting district, I know of constituents who want to tie to Comcast, but as you just discussed, are subject to a special construction cost. And I understood from Mr. Carr's presentation, in fact, those are underserved households. My specific question is, what will the mechanism be? The specific mechanism be for identifying who those people are? How will they inform you or us? Or how do you determine those individuals who I think in your current plan easily could be passed by? Because I know a handful of my constituents are precisely in that position and just want to make sure they don't get lost in the shuffle.
Yes, so that's a good question. And the way that we take that kind of crowdsourced information, and it's especially important when an area seems to be served on FCC map--
Yep.
--or if there's infrastructure passing by the house but not actually going to the driveway. So we have a website where we create what's called a fiber zone for the county. And any resident can log in with their information on their address and create an account. It's not committing any net to service. But you will say, for example, this address, All Points believes you have Comcast service. Is this true? Yes or no? If you do have Comcast service there and you click yes, then it'll say, thank you for your information, but at this time, not part of the project. And if you say no, then we'll, we'll ask about a special construction cost or-- And if you say no, then we'll, we'll ask about, um, a special construction cost or have you tried to get service from Comcast? And we put all that information into a database and then we would share that with DHCB and say, yes, we know that Comcast may be on this road, but here on these 19, uh, locations, they've already pre-registered. They have demonstrated that they requested a service installed from Comcast. These are the fees they were charged. This is how we recommend them to be, um, listed as unserved. So we have a database, uh, with an easy user interface that we would direct, uh, constituents to, to go to and enter their information.
And then my last related question that just came to mind, and I promise we'll let you go. Um, in situations where someone has been quoted a special construction charge, I don't know this for certain. I've only heard high numbers in the twenties of thousands of dollars, but I assume there, there are lower cost estimates for people who might not be so far off Comcast distribution line. And this might be two in the weeds, but is there or will there be a bright line cutoff where a household makes a decision that they can't afford to spend $3,000 with Comcast? And you might in fact say, well, that's, that's actually reasonable and does not, does not constitute a special construction charge. At what point, at what point does a cost estimate rise to sort of, uh, underserved is my question?
Yeah. That's a, a great question. Uh, so our understanding is that if the installation fee is more than what is posted on the, let's say, our Comcast website, uh, so if they say installation is $9,000 and you have a resident who has a bill for $1,200, then that is a special construction cost and would be considered unserved. Uh, I, I don't know if, uh, Lonnie has other insight on that, but that is our understanding. If there's any special construction cost in addition to the standard install fee, then that location is considered unserved.
That's reassuring, very, very much so.
And I can, I'm happy to say yes, sir. Question, yeah, this is a big deal. It's a big decision, um, for the county, for the future, and, um, I'll, I'll say yes, sir. Any questions?
Mr. Inez, I know, um, it's Christine Smith again. I'm sorry to bother you, but, um, I know the other week when I was doing some research, I, I found a portal for a project that you currently have open. Can you, can you tell us, uh, what places you're doing these, this survey work currently so we can see what those look like?
Uh, I think you could enter your address, uh, even if there isn't a fiber zone in your area.
So it's just on the All Points broadband website?
Uh, it's, uh, fiber dot allpointsbroadband.com.
Great. Thank you so much. And then the other issue we have a lot of problems with in the county is that we have folks build infrastructure, like we have a huge problem right now in Harris Hollow. You probably heard the young lady speak at the beginning of the meeting. But what we have problems with are, are folks maintaining the infrastructure that they build. And so what kind of track record and assurances would you have for us that, um, that you don't just build the network, but that were a priority for maintaining the network?
Good question.
Uh, well, I think as, um, a few folks in the public hand on the, uh, board have pointed out that, um, this, this is a very expensive investment from all parties, from the ISP to the state to the county. And, um, you know, we're interested in maintaining this network for all of your citizens who are served, uh, for years and years to come. And we are partnering with Rappahannock Electric Co-op, uh, to help manage and maintain that network. One of the, the benefits we have of working with them is that, um, you know, if there's an issue on a, on a pole or in a series of, uh, series of poles, then we have, uh, access to their crews and they can help reinstall and maintain the climate, especially the fiber that is run in the supply zone. Uh, that All Points would not have crews, uh, maintaining the supply zone fiber. So one way we can mitigate that risk is partnering with companies like Rappahannock Electric Co-op. Um, and then our, uh, maintenance of the network is directly, you know, directly impacts customer satisfaction. And if customers aren't happy, then, uh, they, it will get to your attention, I assure you, the next day, uh, the board and also, um, obviously at All Points.
And then, um, one last question. Uh, of the, we have resolutions attached to our packet tonight to move forward, but my understanding from Mr. Carr the other evening was that we're already part of the regional approach and there's not really any additional action required from the board to stay on the regional approach. Is that correct?
Well, I, I think you would need to take some sort of action to indicate your level of support. Uh, but you do not need to take any action with respect to the regional MOU.
Thank you.
I, I received this letter from, um, the Regional Commission requesting the county to commit to supporting the application in a certain dollar amount. And so that's where things are linked, uh, together. Uh, the resolutions I prepared basically drive to this and authorizing signature of this letter and authorizing the, um, dedication of a certain amount of funds to, towards the project. So I understand that the applicant, the applicant, the Regional Commission will need to convince the state that, uh, there is a commitment of funding towards a particular project.
Here, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Excuse me. Uh, Mr. Inez, excuse me. Ron Fraser here. I represent, uh, Jackson District. And I, and if I understood Mr. Carr correctly last week, that, um, if we were to go like on our own and had a, a regional, instead of the regional approach, then the, um, the documents would be a little bit different in that, uh, a performance bond would be with the county. But in the regional approach, the performance bond would not be with Rappahannock County for the work that would be, uh, taken, undertaken. Is that correct?
I'm sorry, could you, Mr.?
Yeah, I'll try, I'll try to, try to do that in English this time. That's, English is a second language. Um, I speak fluent hillbilly, but I have trouble with that sometimes. Uh, my understanding is that if Rappahannock continues with, uh, phase two of the regional agreement, that we, we won't have a signed performance bond with Rappahannock County. It will be with the regional authority. Is that correct? Is, is my understanding correct on that?
So, uh, so we presented option A and option B last week. And so if you, if the county moved forward with option A, you would be applying through the Northern Shenandoah Valley Regional Commission. Yes. And then option B, you would be applying directly as the county. And so in that case, any agreement resulting from the, uh, grant award, if awarded, would be between the county and All Points, uh, and DHCB. And so if, if there are other conditions that we needed to satisfy for the county, then that would be directly with the county in the option B scenario. The option A scenario, um, since the commission would be the applicant for the grant, they would enter into the grant award contract with DHCA.
But you see, I have a problem with that entire concept because Rappahannock County is not a member of that commission or, or regional authority. But we would be, uh, whether we use, uh, local tax dollars, the VODI funds, which are state tax dollars allotted to Rappahannock County, or any, any form of monies, we would be giving to All Points Broadband with no performance agreement with this county. We don't even have a member that sits on that, uh, regional authority over there, or regional, regional commission. So in effect, we would be giving upwards of 10, 11 thou, uh, mi- million dollars, rather, 10, 11 million dollars, maybe 13 million dollars that we have absolutely no say in, in, in the performance of the work after that point. I don't see how I could support that.
So in the, uh, in terms of the baby application, uh, there are a number of instances where counties that are outside of the planning district commission, uh, join in a regional project. Or you could even have an application that goes between three counties, uh, one of which is the official applicant on the, the baby program. Um, and the other two counties are not the official applicant. So that's one part. It's, it's not uncommon to join neighboring counties, even if you're outside of a planning district commission or, you know, if you're applying a neighboring county and they are the official applicant to baby. It's not uncommon. And I think it's even encouraged, you know, to do these kinds of regional projects. Uh, in terms of a performance bond, um, the contract for the grant award would be with the state and the planning district commission and the ISP. And option A and then option B, that would be with, directly with the counties. If that was a feature that you requested, that's something that we would, you know, have to work through.
Yeah. We, we'd have to work through that because there's no accountability then to the taxpayers of this county for approximately 13 million dollars worth of taxpayers' funds.
Well, the, um, the way that the funding works for the, the grant from the baby program is that, um, the actual fiber needs to be constructed and built before the ISP can submit, you know, a monthly bill for reimbursements. So it's, the money is not, the money does not go out the door until there's fiber in your county. Um, so that is one mechanism that they have to enforce, build out. And then the second is that there is some, uh, I think it's a 10% retained under the county, uh, sorry, that the state holds back until the project is complete before it's released. So there are some enforcement mechanisms built into the baby program, um, to make sure that the money doesn't go out before the construction actually occurs.
That, that, that's good to hear that, but there's still the, the matter of the 5.9 million that there, that this county would be on the hook for. And yet.
Correct.
But, but I'm not finished. I, I need to finish that thought if I could, sir. Um, the, the problem is that we would be putting up 5.9 million dollars however we get it. And, and, and then the agreement is actually with the Regional Commission that doesn't have any money in the game. And like I said, and we're not a member of that organization. So we've got to have some safeguards that are specific to Rappahannock County and specific to the amount of money that we put up.
Um, would it not be a multi-party agreement, including all of the, uh, partner localities? When we get to phase three?
Sure. That's what I have to, that's what I have to totally understand.
Yeah. And certainly before you collectively sign on the dotted line in January through March, that needs to be ironed out.
But that's not what Mr. Carr, uh, said. Maybe there was a, a misunderstanding between what my question actually was and what he actually answered. But, but going away from that meeting last week was that the performance bond that All Points would, would sign would be with the Regional Commission or the Regional Authority. I think it got used once or twice. And, but the problem is, again, we're not part of that and they're not putting up any money. So.
The dollars from the county would not, would not go out the door until there is construction in the county. So in, in the regional plan four in the county as its own applicant, um, we wouldn't submit a reimbursement for Rappahannock County that you would be liable for until there's construction in Rappahannock County.
But clearly if, if dollars are going to change hands, I'm sorry, this is Gary Curry. Dollars are going to change hands from Rappahannock County to ultimately All Points via, uh, in VR, whatever acronym they are, Northern Valley Shenado, Northern Shenandoah Valley Regional Commission. Uh, there must be an agreement between Rappahannock County and somebody in order to identify how and when those dollars are going to change hands.
Mr. Fraser, I'm with you on this one too. And I, I think we're going, we definitely have to work out protections for our county. Absolutely. And that's one of my concerns about the regional approach is losing, losing control, some, some degree of oversight and control. So I'm with you a hundred percent on that. And I, I, I do think that the appropriate time to do that would be leading up to, um, entering into a, a contract, um, in the next phase. But I, you know, you have, you have my full support on that. Yeah.
That's all I have at this point, sir. Thank you so much.
This is Debbie Donahue. Um, I represent Wakefield District. The one thing that I've never really gotten into, all these questions have covered just about everything I've got, but if you're pulling your, or if REC is pulling your fiber across their poles, um, is there some sort of redundancy built in? Any concerns about that? Because when they lose electric, are we going to lose fiber? I guess you lose fiber if you lose electric. I don't know. I'm trying to understand that partnership. Um, and I assume there's a win for them because they'll get data through, um, the fiber that's pulled that tells them if a line is down or if a certain section of a county is down. But I'm just trying to understand how that relationship is beneficial to both companies.
So I will try to answer for REC. And, um, so the electric companies have an interest in, uh, grid modernization and being able to monitor devices on their network, uh, such as sub, substations, re-closers, um, automatic metering. And they do benefit from running fiber to, from those nodes, um, on their, their lines. And so I, they will be, you know, motivated and interested, interested on their end to restore any kind of outage with all this of their last mile broadband partnership. Um, in terms of an outage that affects your electric service and your internet service, I, I, there would be some cases where the electricity would, would go out, but the fiber internet would still be working. Um, but I think at that point, you know, the devices in your home, uh, who would be using directly probably be out as well unless you have a generator. Um, but yeah, there's a, a major outage event that impacts electricity. It's also going to probably take out the, the fiber service as well.
And we really haven't talked about customer service. Um, if we move forward with this and All Points gets fiber to the home, what's life like with, uh, All Points customer service? And what would the citizens expect?
They would expect and receive, uh, a prompt human beings answering the phone if there is an issue. Uh, I haven't looked today, but I think our Google rating, um, for what it's worth is, I think, 4.2, 4.3 stars, uh, which is relatively good for an internet service provider. Um, we pride ourselves on customer service and support. If we can solve a customer's issue, uh, we will do that as fast as possible. Um, when you call in, you can talk to a human being who is going to be attentive and will listen to, uh, whatever issue is that you are experiencing. Um, I don't know.
24/57s?
Yeah. So there's always a human being that is willing to answer the question for you, um, for the, the customer. Um, and if there's a, you know, major, major outage, we have on-call technicians who will be out in the field responding. That's some of the work you just can't get done at night, especially around, um, you know, electric utilities. And a lot of the, the work, if it's a, a fiber line, it's in the supply zone of an REC pole. of an REC pole, then that work will be done by an REC technician or contractor. It's a different skill set to work in the power supply zone. But outside of that, we can have All Points technicians repairing fiber, repairing drops, servicing the customer-prepared equipment that's inside your house. It'll all be All Points's fault and reporters.
So based on this, just this one regional project, presumably you will have to scale up significantly your customer service and technical support. And that's just one regional project. We know you're working with two of our other neighbors. So how are you planning to scale that up? Not specifically, but how can you give us assurance that you're able to scale that up over the next two years?
Sure, that's a good question. And we have the equity support, which will be, a lot of these details are going to be in the VATTI application. But the letters of support in that application will include design and estimate and network maintenance review done by third parties and letters of support for the entire business scaling up to serve the 2,000 locations in Rappahannock and in all of the areas as well. They could probably open up a local office as well as a, not only a place to store materials, et cetera, during construction, but also to maintain a workforce here and forward.
Thank you.
I think we're past those five minutes.
Yeah, I think so. Really appreciate you staying on.
Thank you.
Any other questions for All Points?
Good answers.
Yes. Any more discussion?
I did have a question for Lonnie Handleton at DHCD. Lonnie, it's Christine Smith from the Piedmont District. And my question is, I do hear from folks, you know, estimates are depend, you know, originally the broadband committee said the county was 75% served, 25% not served. And by the current definitions, we're given more numbers like 75% unserved, 25% served. So there seems to be some gray area about how many people actually need service. And of those people, how many of them actually want service? So my question to you, Lonnie, is in dealing with other counties, what have you found to be the most equitable way to structure securing the funding? A tax rate to everyone when a lot of folks already have service and are happy with their service and actually pay a lot more than what All Points Broadband is proposing to charge? Seems like it might not be a good idea because if you have Comcast, you're paying a $200 a month bill that folds in your internet service. And if you're getting All Points, you could get it for as little as $59 a month. And also, the other side of that coin is, as we've heard from a lot of real estate agents, homes that don't have internet service are valued at 25% lower than the same home with internet service. So essentially, by installing internet to homes, we are raising the value of those homes. So I just wonder, what is the way that we structure this deal so it's fair to the people that already have internet and, you know, don't want anything different and don't want to pay more taxes versus the folks that maybe, you know, want internet and are willing to pay more for it? And that just seems like a fairness question in how we, how we structure, you know, wherever the revenue comes from.
So I think in the past, a lot of other localities have found that it's a situation where a rising, a rising tide results. And so for a lot of localities, they've been okay using a more general tax that does perhaps apply to residents who already have broadband. But another option that, you know, maybe might exist in the middle ground to that is a municipal service district of some form. So, you know, that would be a tax that's just assessed in the area where construction is being done and would therefore have the residents who are receiving this new service be the ones paying for it.
That seems like a much fairer solution to me. I know in a lot of the villages and town, you know, folks wouldn't be interested in it, don't have a need for it. And as part of the ARPA funds that are out there are infrastructure monies. You know, there would be other projects that we should take on that would benefit those areas. But they shouldn't be taxed, you know, for services that they're not going to get.
Any other questions for the gentleman on Zoom?
Lonnie, how many times have you been through this process?
This is my first time all the way from start to finish.
Okay. Do you have any words of advice for us as we move forward into phase two?
Right now, it seems like you are all on a good track and making good decisions. So I don't know if there's anything specific other than to not undervalue how important broadband can be and especially for the future.
Thank you.
So it seems to me that we got all the information we're going to have for now. It seems like if to go the regional route secures our chances or possibility of our chances to be greater to get this service and be in this kind of a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. And that we still have the opportunity, if things go sour, to not go through with this later. That's the sensible thing to do, given the fact that we have a extra gift of whatever it is.
3.5 million.
That it makes sense to go ahead and with the regional approach, which we have a resolution for that. So I'll go ahead and make a motion that we adopt this resolution. And I don't have to read this whole thing, go ahead.
Identify it by name.
Okay, this is a joint resolution by the Board of Supervisors and Broadband Authority of Rappahannock County, Virginia, authorizing a regional VATTI application requiring a local contribution. And this is, you know, given the fact that we're going to accept the gift from the Ockery family so that it actually makes it more attractive than if we went the standalone option that was the other consideration. So that's my motion.
I'll second, I'll second Mr. Parrish's motion for discussion.
And I want to clarify that you're, we have a bit of an interesting situation that we have two bodies meeting. And both bodies will have to consider a resolution if it's a joint document. So I assume your motion is as a board member, Board of Supervisors member?
Sure. I'll do it that way. Yeah.
Mr. Woodson, you're second.
Yeah, but a point of clarification, there are, there are voting blocks for both the Board of Supervisors and the Broadband Authority. So.
Sequentially.
Okay, I see.
So somebody else is going to have to make a motion.
Well, you, you'll vote, you'll discuss and vote on the motion of the board and then see if the Broadband Authority is like-minded.
Okay.
I don't mean to disagree, but I would think logically we should do the broadband authority business first because it would typically be heard from the broadband authority. And we, and we and they would weigh in on it. And then it would be sent up to the Board of Supervisors.
Either order would be fine. Whichever, whatever the pleasure of the boards.
I'm perfectly happy to switch it.
I think I agree broadband authority first.
Okay, I'll make the motion as a broadband authority member.
Multiple copies.
I just wonder, is there any conflict of interest if they're talking to each other in the same meeting?
I've been conflicted.
Mr. Woodson, you second it as a broadband authority member?
I will. As a broadband authority member, I will also second the motion. Yeah.
Discussion?
Even though this is not in the motion, as we have it, it does, it does include the assurance that we get the gift. Is that part of the?
Yes, it is part of this.
It is, it's.
It's a last.
It is in there, okay.
Yeah, it's right, the last.
I didn't check my email this afternoon, so I didn't know.
Be yet further resolved that the Rappahannock County Board of Supervisors and Rappahannock County Broadband Authority are committed to working together to identify the most appropriate sources of funding to dedicate to the project, including generous commitment of 3.5 million from a local private donor.
Okay.
All right, we have a motion and a second discussion. Broadband Authority?
I just want to say, I think it's very generous for Mr. Ockery to donate that money to this project. And at the same time, I have some very serious concerns about the optics of accepting such a large gift from someone who will surely be bringing some very large business in front of this body or the other body in the very near future. And I just wonder if there's any conflicts in that regard in that we're accepting a very large gift and we're expecting some very big business to come our way.
I don't think it serves us to project in the future.
Well, I don't mean to interrupt you, Mr. Parrish, but I was asking the county attorney.
Oh, sorry.
Well, what you said was that it presents some optics of an appearance of, but as far as the application of the complex of interest bank, I don't see where that's critical. But there may be, as you say, an optics issue. But I don't think it's going to prevent any of you from voting on either issue.
Yeah, I mean, we have no way of knowing if anything's coming down the pike or not. So. This is a problem at hand, not what could occur in the future.
So it will require a roll call vote from the Broadband Authority when you complete discussion?
I just want to say, I actually agree with my constituent, Mr. Fletcher. This is an awful lot of money. We could do a lot with Starlink for this amount of money. My other concern, as someone who is devoted to preserving the rural and agricultural nature of this county, in addition to trying to address the, the needs of my constituents for, as was eloquently pointed out, telehealth, long-distance learning and telecommuting. This is sort of a Pandora's box. Once we open this box, there's no going back. We have no over, no control over where it goes.
I thought this was phase two of what we're going into.
This is phase two.
Right, so we're, I mean, we have phase three to pull the rug out if we want to.
Well, I just think that it says, as one of my other very fine constituents pointed out not too long ago, it's a little bit like boiling a frog. If you just keep turning up the heat a little at a time, before you know it, the frog is dead. And I think we need to have some serious discussions about opening this Pandora's box. I know when I ran for my seat on the Board of Supervisors, I pledged to respect the rural and agricultural heritage of this county and do my best to preserve it and not do anything that would lead to widespread development of this county. And I really feel like this is a step in that direction. I remember some of you, when you ran for office, that took a similar stance, that grew up in areas where King's Dominion moved in and ruined the area. And that, once you do it, there's no going back. And I don't mind moving on to phase two. But I think we ought to figure out how to apply some serious brakes before we move on to phase three, if we're going to continue this. And if we're not going to do this, we ought to move to Starlink and provide for the folks that live in the county that need this and not worry about something that could lead to widespread development that we don't want.
Thank you, Christine. Thank you.
Excuse me. Go ahead.
Almost, I think almost two years ago, I, I attended a broadband committee meeting. The broadband committee being the predecessor to the now broadband authority. And I remember one night with people in the room who had been working on this issue for a long time, including Margaret, we did, I guess what you call a back-of-the-napkin cost estimate for what it would take to bring fiber to Rappahannock County in a universal way. And if memory serves me correctly, I think we came up with something like $26 million. And it was, it was, as it turns out, assuming All Points estimate is valid, is a pretty good, pretty good back-of-the-napkin calculation. And when you arrive at a number of $26 million, not anticipating the, the year or two that we have had and all the challenges, and embedded in those challenges also some opportunities, it's hard to imagine that we've come from the potential of having to find a way, basically an impossible task of finding $26 million. And so now we're down potentially below 10% of that cost estimate that we came up with two, only two years ago. And today, just trying to wrap my head around what this really means, I, I did a per household cost estimate. And I think it, I guess it dovetails in part with Ms. Smith's point on Starlink. And if, in fact, All Points have put forward an estimate of underserved houses, that is accurate, it's 2,000 houses. And we'll just use rough, rough numbers, $20 million. So that's $10,000 per house. That's a big number. And then if you start breaking down the 10,000, given this regional agreement, about $3,600 would come from the state. About $3,250 for each household would come from the ISP, in this case, All Points Broadband. And then our local contribution, which is also a huge and startling number for a $10,000 fiber cost per house, would be somewhere in the range of $3,000. And then this afternoon, we get a letter from Mr. Ockery and his family, my constituents, and I, I want to say thank you. Thank you for this generous offer. Because suddenly, that 3,000 comes down to $1,200 per household in terms of a local contribution to cover the $10,000 per house cost. And then if we look at ARPA funds and, and potential other grant sources, including the schools, soon we get down to a much smaller local contribution per household number. And without trying very hard, I can actually get down to close to $350 per household as our local contribution, having started at $3,000. And we know the Starlink kits are about $500 each. And one constituent approached me at the Quickie Mart the other day. And he made a good point. He said, wouldn't Starlink just be cleaner? We wouldn't have fiber everywhere. There wouldn't be digging, there wouldn't be construction crews. Just buy everyone a Starlink kit. And I see some sense in that. But we also know that we're still in this, in very much a beta testing phase. And I have constituents who, like Mr. Capielli, are enjoying high speed via their Starlink kits. But also people who are finding that the latency, which is an important, important factor for allowing to do Zoom or WebEx calls, is actually not working that well at all. In fact, the one constituent I mentioned previously, who's like a $25,000 Comcast hookup, is still thinking about doing that because Starlink isn't allowing him and his wife to work from home. So when you break down the numbers by household, and again, thank you to Mr. Ockery, and then frankly, thank you to some of this money that is coming our way. And I agree with Ms. Smith, we have other competing priorities. Here, we're agreeing to proceed through the next phase of this. And I also agree with Mr. Parr, Mr. Frazier, we need to protect ourselves as a locality. We're going to have those opportunities. And we're also going to have an opportunity to go find additional non-local money to cover our cost, our remaining cost of this per-house. household share. So all that said, I have concerns. In summary, I have concerns about the regional agreement. I wonder where little Rappahannock County is going to come down in terms of prioritization. I agree with Mr. Fletcher. I don't like the feeling of being rushed here. I think it's been a big rush driven in part by the state and all this money that's been made available. I don't like rushing through technical decisions. I expressed to, I expressed to All Points Broadband, my concern is about supply chain constraints related to fiber in particular, and also labor constraints. And our, I think we all share the concern, will they be able to deliver the network that they're promising to deliver? But I believe we will have an opportunity to wrestle with those details as we approach potentially entering into a contract agreement. Mr. Cloney made good points regarding performance standards and performance bonds, which Mr. Frazier echoed, and I agree wholeheartedly that we need to work out those details and we need to protect Rappahannock County, and we cannot be at a disadvantage just because we're going the regional approach. And finally, one speaker said, and I think this is, this is where we as members of our local governing body have to take our responsibility seriously. We are providing ultimately for the welfare and safety of our citizens. And at the risk of repeating myself again, I had two terminally ill constituents whose families were unable to contact hospice or fire and rescue as their loved ones were dying. I had another constituent who was unable to contact dispatch for her mother twice in the last month. And those, I know, are localized issues in part due to CenturyLink's failure to maintain their infrastructure, but still, I can't overlook those direct and immediate experiences that I'm seeing every day. So while I started the day not wanting to enter into the regional agreement, Mr. Akri's and his family's gift certainly makes it more palatable, and it puts us, if I'm doing the math correctly, at about a half a million dollar advantage compared to what our local contribution would have been under the go-to loan approach. So anyway, thank you for indulging me, and that's, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. I would just like to say that I've been working with the broadband committee since before I was elected, so it's been about two and a half years now. We had people stand up and say the committee hadn't gotten anything done, there was no progress. The first paper that I found was written in 2007 that went to the Board of Supervisors saying the county needed help. The broadband committee was created in 2017, and because they couldn't go any further, we all agreed that we needed the broadband authority to make something happen. I do believe this is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. I've reached out to Delegate Weber, Senator Obenshein, and I talked to a gentleman with Mr. Warner's, Senator Warner's office, just to understand the dollars a little bit better and whether they truly felt like this was the time to do this. And they all came back with, they may not like how much cash is being given directly to the governor, but they do believe that this is the time to do this and that we shouldn't ignore all the grant funding and everything that's out there. So I look at this as we've been given many years to look into the problem, and we're all under the agreement that there is a problem, just not necessarily door-to-door numbers, but hopefully much closer than we've ever been before. And I think when we vote today, it's really for the safety of the citizens, the education of our students and our adults who are doing college work from home, the working from home and the doctor's visits from home. And what we found in COVID was there are a lot of people that were stuck at home that had mental health problems, and they actually were more likely to speak to their doctor because they could do it via Zoom. They weren't as intimidated as walking in an office. I think we have a lot of positive outcomes with fiber. I do understand the concern about growth, but in my mind, unless, Mr. Whitson, you could correct me, the comp plan, our zoning ordinances, the rules that we put in place for big business or big development, that's what stops that. Fiber is door-to-door for the houses and somebody that may want a business, but all of that has to, well, the business has to go through the board, the planning commission. So I think we can stop any concerns of growth at that level. Yep, 19-4 sounded a lot, but you're right, I think it was 25, 26 million. When we got down to 5.9, I went, holy cow. I don't know that we can get those funds, but let's look for them. And then we got the gift today in the form of a letter. Thank you very much. I, I believe this is a gift to Rappahannock County. Yes, we've got to control it. Yes, we've got to make sure that people are looking at this, and we have an attorney that will help us make sure the contract is good for the broadband authority slash Rappahannock County. And I, even though, you know, I can't compare fiber to the home to a 400-acre amusement park, I do believe it will be a good change for this county and the citizens of this county, and I think it's one they will appreciate when it's done and remember for many years. Any further discussion? We have a motion and a second from the broadband authority. Roll call vote. Mr. Whitson?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Abstain.
Mr. Frazier?
Nay.
Mr. Parrish?
Aye.
And I also. Now, Board of Supervisors hat.
I would like to make a motion. There's been a lot of talk about safety tonight, and I'm really glad we have those Recycled CARES Act money numbers with us because I think one of the things on which we can all agree is that our fire and rescue folks have come above and beyond throughout COVID to really help our community. And I know that we can't use the ARPA funds to help with some of the things for some of our rescue squads, but I know we can use that Recycled CARES Act money. And I had a request, and I'd taken it to Mr. Curry before, for the revenue to offset from the loss of the Fourth of July and some other events in Sperryville. And I really think if we're gonna talk about safety, we need to just talk about taking care of our fire and rescue folks before we go spending $6 million on internet service.
Thank you, I think.
I'll make a motion.
I didn't pick up, you said motion, but I didn't understand the motion.
That's a motion that we pay the $40,000 or whatever that exact figure is to the Sperryville Fire Department for the annual loss of revenue as we did with the CARES Act money last year.
I don't see why that's our focus tonight.
Well, we've heard a lot about safety, and we're talking about how to spend our CARES Act money.
It's not on the agenda and.
The agenda wasn't clear, and I asked at the beginning of the meeting specifically if we could talk about how to spend those recycled CARES Act funds.
The agenda is relative to broadband, I think it is related to that. You could amend the agenda, of course, if you wanted to do that.
Well, we've moved on to the Board of Supervisors business, but if we need to amend the agenda, in light of all the discussion about safety tonight, to talk about getting some funds to our fire and rescue folks, then I would make a motion that we amend the agenda to do that.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second?
I just want to make sure that we're, Mr. Goff, maybe you can weigh in. We're talking, we've had one meeting that was specifically directed at a preliminary discussion of CARES Act-related expenditures. That was noticed for that purpose, so the public was on notice that they would be coming to a meeting to hear a discussion of the Board of Supervisors regarding, I guess it was, I'm sorry, ARPA-related expenditures. And then this agenda is very narrow in that it speaks to broadband. And Ms. Smith, when you asked about a discussion of ARPA or CARES Act money, I, what I heard, and I apologize if I didn't catch the nuance, what I heard was you were asking about those funds in the context of the single agenda item on here.
There's been a great outcry for public safety tonight, so, I mean, I was always thinking of bringing it forward, but considering all we've heard from the audience tonight, I don't think we should delay. And I did have, you know, a request from the chief again just the other day for those funds, and I think if we're gonna, you know, sit up here and talk about spending $6 million, we ought to at least send our fire and rescue companies what they've lost in revenue in the last year.
If I could interrupt for a second, this is not a special meeting, this is a continued meeting from.
Correct.
So Chapter 30 would control your parliamentary, I think you would probably finish the agenda item you're in, add an agenda item and consider that, and based on your rules, action for that item that wasn't on the orders of the day would need to be unanimous to carry.
Right. Would be an agenda item.
Right.
So I don't think anybody can say that this board has been negligent in terms of taking care of our fire and rescue people, and I think that, I think everybody realizes that we're, we're mainly committed to taking care of fire and rescue and the safety of our citizens. I just think it's a completely different subject for tonight, and it's something that we could discuss at the next Board of Supervisors meeting.
I'd like to take care of it now. I just hear a lot of lip service, and I mean, it's essential funding that they need.
We have a motion.
They have got all the funding they need, and we continue to support that. They, we've obligated ourselves to 100% of their operating costs.
I just think.
That's already done.
I just think it's wild that we spent $140,000 up at Chester Gap for paid personnel, and we don't support our volunteers.
I'm not exactly sure how we got to where we are right now.
Well, you're in the middle of considering a resolution. I believe the request is to add an agenda item, presumably after this agenda item, not in the middle of this agenda item, to discuss allocation of CARES Act dollars to fire and rescue.
So moves. We have a motion and a second.
I would, I would say very clearly that I'm not comfortable having an on-the-spot ARPA or CARES Act expenditure-related discussion when I have not prepared for that discussion. And that is why we had a very specific meeting for preliminary discussion, why last year we had two meetings when we actually made decisions on allocation of those funds. And I appreciate Ms. Smith's point, but I think we have to be careful in conflating a broader question of public health and safety with a separate question of fiscal, fiscal responsibility and expenditures. I have no problem supporting backfilling lost revenue for fire and rescue companies, but I'm, I need to consider those expenditures in the broader context of other demands on those same funds, and I'm not prepared to do that right now. And I don't think that there is an urgent public health and safety decision that hinges on us allocating money to one company tonight.
I think it would be more than one company by the time the night's over.
Right, we have a motion and a second to amend the agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Nay. All right, continuing to the Board of Supervisors discussion now with regards to the broadband initiative, I need a motion and a second if a Board of Supervisor would like to do that.
I'll go ahead and make the same motion as a Board of Supervisors member.
Just to be clear, that's the adoption of the resolution?
The adoption of the resolution.
For regional VATI application.
Regional VATI.
I will second Mr. Parrish's motion.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion?
I will most likely vote against it because there's still a lot of missing information, and there's really no reason, I see, that we have to vote for it because Mr. Carr said we did not have to if we wanted to remain in it. And frankly, I'm still concerned about the conflicting comments and information that we got from Mr. Carr versus what we got, excuse me, from the very beginning with All Points' response to our RFI, which actually was a response to our RFP, but that's a different subject, and how we're supposed to be part of this regional thing, but we find out today that, I did it anyway, that Clark County is being told different information as far as the connection. So I, we don't have enough stuff that's really ironed out for the Board of Supervisors to continue, you know, committing our, our support to this initiative when there's really, the initiative isn't really ironed out and ironclad of what we're gonna support from now through December. So that's my position.
And my position is that we would probably be better served to forge something with Starlink now and go it alone instead of waiting for this regional approach, or we're gonna come in dead last, as always.
Yeah.
Any other discussion?
Just like we did with the radios.
We have a motion and a second, no other discussion, roll call vote. Mr. Whitson?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Abstain.
Mr. Frazier?
Nay.
Mr. Parrish?
Aye.
And I also. I think we need a motion to adjourn.
Both bodies. Broadband Authority first.
Who moves?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the broadband authority adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed?
I move that the Board of Supervisors adjourns its meeting, and I also thank everyone for coming out tonight on this important issue and for all the thoughtful public comments.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Thank you.